Listen, you know all about that, sure. Good evening, everyone. This meeting was called for Thursday, June 6, 2024, at 7:30 PM at Borough Hall located at 77 Summit Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-8B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting was advertised on the Spotswood website and in the home news tributes.
Councilman Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Lesko.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Zaborni.
Here.
And Council President Legakis.
Here. All right, we have two readings tonight on first reading. Jen, would you like to do the honors?
Absolutely. We have two ordinances on first reading tonight. Public hearing scheduled for June 17, 2024. Ordinance 2024-6, an ordinance amending and supplementing the salary ordinance of the borough of Spotswood entitled "An Amendment to an Ordinance Fixing and Establishing the Salaries and Wages of Certain Non-Bargaining Unit Employees of the Borough of Spotswood, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey." And ordinance 2024-7, ordinance of the borough of Spotswood and county of Middlesex, state of New Jersey, establishing a policy for property tax exemption on dwelling house of 100% totally disabled veterans for surviving specs. We also have one resolution on the consent agenda, 2024-81, and that is the appointment of Deshaun T. Kemp as our chief financial officer.
Thank you. This time I'd like to make a motion to open to the public. Second it.
On paper.
I, the public comment portion of the Spotswood Borough Council meeting is to allow the public to bring to council's attention their concerns or comments in accordance with NJSA 10-4-12A. And as well as Spotswood Borough ordinances 218 and 219, except upon consent of the council president, each person addressing the council, in the case of a resolution, shall limit their remarks to three minutes, and in the case of an ordinance, shall limit their remarks to five minutes total for the meeting. No person shall direct any remark or question to any specific council member except by permission of the council president. Any council member through the council president may choose to answer a question, but they are not obligated to do so. All persons wishing to address the council shall do so from the podium or other specified location by the council president. Each person addressing the council must identify themselves by name and address. If said person is representing a business or organization, they shall further state whether their comments are their personal view or those of the group they represent.
As you will. No builders tonight, though, so no questions. But I do have some questions regarding time travel 29th of St. George, regarding ordinance 2024-6, the wage ordinance. Specifically, the part-time article on the first page where it says range is $11 an hour to $20 an hour. How can we get away with $11 an hour when minimum wage is $15.13?
Good question. Great question. I know that some of these ranges are, and we were talking about this earlier, Councilwoman Schwartz and I were talking about some of these areas of part-time positions also. So I would need to get.
I looked at the law before I came, and it didn't make any distinction between the part-time and the non-part-time.
Right, right. So that's an excellent question.
Okay.
I can find out from the business administration, I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Do our borough employees get a yearly review? Can you explain what you're, a yearly review, assessing how well you're doing your job?
Whether you get a raise or something.
Exactly.
I would assume so, but I can't say that I know for sure if that's something that's done in the administration.
Okay. So then how do they get a raise? If there's no yearly review? Is it just a blanket across the board for everybody, a certain percentage or whatever?
It's at the discretion of the mayor of the administration on who, on how they get.
Okay, so how do they determine that if there's no review?
Who you know. I can't answer how they do that.
Okay. Are there job descriptions for every classification that's on this list?
I know for some of them there are. You know, we have some of them in the clerk's office. I can't say that I know if there's one for everyone.
Okay. Notice that there were some changes in the office line of aging section. The director has been replaced by a part-time coordinator of senior services. Would that be near him?
Yeah, so the way that this works is if you go back to ordinance 2021-11, all right, according to that restructure, the community affairs was named a director. So a director should not be making, should not have a larger range than a part-time coordinator. Like, it's a title thing, okay? So if you look at the ranges, it's a title thing and it's a part-time thing that puts everybody in their proper, for lack of a better word, pecking order.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
I got you.
Okay, so that's where all of that came in. And then you have the program coordinator and the administrative assistant, that's that. And then you have the part-time coordinator, that's Jen.
Jen may not be coming back.
Okay, but that's her position.
Okay.
Okay.
What about the bus driver?
The bus driver, when I spoke to Brandon, when I spoke to BA, it was, we hired somebody, they worked for a day, they're not working anymore.
Right.
We hired somebody that worked for three days, they're not coming back. We, I believe we're in the process of getting another one that's starting.
Is the, is the holdup the salary that we're offering?
I'm not sure as to the specifics as to why one person or another left. That I can't tell you.
My only concern is that, you know, that a lot of those seniors rely on that bus transportation for medicals.
I understand.
And dialysis is life necessary.
I understand.
Now they have to pay an Uber to get to where they need to go.
I will be there Uber come January 25 or June 25, and I'm not working anymore. I have no control on the hiring and the hiring.
I know.
All I can do is keep sending the emails and saying, where are we, what's happening? And then I get that update. And that's all it got right now for you. I don't know why they're leaving, why they're not, because I haven't spoken to any of them. It's a comfort of my thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Hager, 65, permanent drive. I also have a question on the salary ordinance.
Yes.
And it's a question I raised several weeks ago in reference to public safety, chief of police, the range is being increased to 215,000. I questioned it at the time as to how, why it's so high. I had mentioned Dr. in reference, the superintendent of state police taking 190. I see in the same ordinance, the captain is making 177. All the management courses I have had in my lifetime, many, I was public manager for forty-eight years, should be approximately a $10,000 interval between salary ranges.
Right.
Leave a $38,000 gap. Wondering why?
With regards to the increase, it's built in, from what I understand. But I cannot say why those salaries were at that range to begin with. A lot of these salaries were set prior to some of us on council and the steps that they go through.
Is there a contract set forth for this field position?
Yes.
And when is that contract signed?
I would have to, I'm not sure exactly. I would have to see when all of that was put in place.
And when we had Almeta as part of the responsibility for the chief, I understand there was a large increase given to the chief at that point.
I can't answer that, I'm not sure. I wasn't, I wasn't on council at that time.
No, you were not.
I can look and get that answer for you, but I don't.
I can tell you there was a large increase at that time, okay? Has anyone looked into taking that away, at least since that's no longer within the scope of responsibility?
Not without one in your hand, we could shut up.
Not without one in your hand, we could shut up. Yeah, it's not, I mean, it's, no, it's not something that we discussed.
Since there is a contract that gets negotiated periodically, I think that should be something that would be on the table without any sort of opposition.
But that negotiation does not go through council.
It's not. We're not part of the understanding for the seventy salary. It's quite clear. Your control of it is setting this up.
But if we deny him that, then we're in the middle.
You sue it again.
We'll be sued again.
I would say that.
His contract has already been negotiated.
Certainly your question should be answered. Certainly the position of the council should be made to the administration if it is, if you do have a position. I think the, sitting here and at that type of salary in a town the size of Spotswood, the scope of responsibility is obscene.
Thank you. Thank you.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
I'm calling from Atlantic City, Manhattan. Going back to the salary ordinance, there's a couple of other things on here as well. The part-time bus driver has from $12 an hour to $25, so that's something else that's going to need to be adjusted for the minimum wage. And then if you go down to part-time seasonal under public works, there goes from 12 to 15, and that's not even within the scope of the minimum wage. I do have a question, though. I have a couple of questions. So it says here, non-bargaining unit employees. Which non-bargaining unit employees are we talking about? Is that Skedaddick's job and the finance manager's job? Yep, so, okay. So those jobs have never been codified. I go back to this whole thing of all jobs, all municipalities could be codified. So why are we even entertaining a part-time business administrator? Jackie ran for office, she ran on the platform that we did not need a full-time business administrator. Now we have a full-time business administrator and a part-time business administrator, who, by the way, makes more part-time with no experience as a business administrator than our OEM coordinator who's been here for, I don't know, 1,022 years. So.
I'll take all the big tail.
All right. Just trying to point out the blatantly obvious here that we've got a business administrator who's been here for a little over a year that's making $80,000 for 20 hours a week. And we've got a full-time OEM coordinator who doesn't get overtime because of, he's a director, making $75,000 a year. Quite frankly, if you're in an emergency situation, Skedaddick's not going to come down and save you for $80,000 a year, but Doug is. So like, we need to adjust these according to positions and emergencies and things like that as well. So like, we really, you know, salary ordinances can be rejected if we need to. My other thing is, is that I have a real issue with this ordinance 2024-7. The state of New Jersey says that if you're a 100% disabled veteran, you do not have to pay property taxes from the effective date that you became a 100% disabled veteran. So in our particular situation, my husband became a disabled veteran effective February 1st, 2023. We got back a check, which was nowhere near where my taxes are. We haven't gotten checked yet, actually, but we had the resolution, which is nowhere near my taxes. Some of these gentlemen that have had severe issues have taken, it takes five, 10 years sometimes to get these dates. And I don't think people should be screwed out of the taxes that they were paying when they didn't have to because the government takes forever to catch up. So if I get fired at my job and I go to unemployment and they reject me, and I go back to unemployment with an attorney and we win, my effective date goes back to the date that I was fired and the date that I quit. If you go to the government and your effective date goes back to February of 2023, he got back all of the money that he should have been paid for that particular amount of disability effective back to that date. I will be honest with you, I called and questioned this originally. And then at the last meeting was when this came up. So again, this is the wrongful discrimination law, just like we have the law in here that you can't have a camera in the bill and anybody comes, oh, like, you know, somebody possibly looking at somebody's shit. So that's exactly what happened here. I mean, yes, it's a good chunk of money for us, but I mean, there are people that have been doing this for years and shouldn't have to pay their taxes. The money should be given back to them. So I am begging you for the sake of the little 90-year-old man who doesn't have any money to please not put this ordinance through and let these people get back their taxes. If we can afford to have people here, John Skedaddick, Kim who's up in finance, and all these other people that we're hiring to these ridiculous tunes of money, we do absolutely nothing all day except watch video cameras and harass people every time they come into the building, we can give back little old people their money because they went and served and gave these people the right to act like the douchebags that they are. Please, let's think about that accordingly, Mrs. Thank you.
Thank you. So speaking of that, with the chat.
I'm just saying, OEM. Oh, sorry, well, you know what it's about. It's a point.
So today's 80th anniversary of D-Day. And we put an ordinance in to limit how far back you can go to get your 100% disability and get your back taxes that you paid. So as Colleen stated, it could take five, 10 years. I still have one that's five years old that I'm waiting on that would put my effective date back even further. This wasn't brought up until I put my 100% in. Who's right idea with this? We received the ordinance prior to the last council by, by the business administrator who received it from. So again, discrimination against me because I put it in. Prior to this, there is. Mr. Rocco, I don't think it was discrimination. It wasn't discrimination against. Was it in there before that? Mr. Rocco, who's the chair? It took me a week to get you for that.
There's others too. Our tax collector just got fired, though.
But we've had a tax collector for years, and that's never been the case.
So.
Just like, I don't know what to tell you. She came in, she looked at it.
After I talked to her, though. After I spoke to her.
So yeah. Mr. Rocco, first of all, it's not discrimination against anybody. We received it, we are reviewing it. It's not something that.
You're putting it in the room.
We said we were putting it in the room. We gotta vote on it. Why is there an ordinance? We have to vote on it. You don't, you don't have to put it in. So I put my big work in. I'm still owed from February 23 to December 23. Where am I getting my money? We have to vote on the ordinance. This ordinance means nothing to what I put in. It's prior to the ordinance. Again, when am I getting my backpack? I can't answer that for you yet. So I'm gonna have to sue. No, you don't have to sue. Why, after it's not going through then? After, after there's no ordinance in there about my backpack, the emergency is what? Yes, this is the emergency plan. I'm gonna call the school veterans that have 100% disability. We're not trying. Mr. Rocco, not trying to. It takes forever. The veterans to get their money, it's not like we're legal avenues and permitting that to get it like that. You have to fight and fight and fight and fight to get what you are entitled to. Okay. And then the town I was putting an ordinance in, so to screw over veterans, because it takes a while to get them. What are we doing in Spotswood? Mr. Rocco, we're not looking to screw any veterans. We, the ordinance was presented, the ordinance was presented to us and we're voting on it. So.
It hasn't been voted on yet, Steve.
It was presented by Jackie in the administration. We, Mr. Rocco, we tabled it when we saw it last meeting so that we can discuss it. And now the ordinance is there so we can vote on it. Can you give us an opportunity to vote on it, please? Sure. And you guys need to investigate because Jackie Palmer doesn't want to talk anymore. She can't be in there. So again, have a second to my question, guys. Thank you.
At C L A M Street, Spotswood, Missouri. I can answer a lot of the questions that I heard tonight. I'm gonna have to answer them in a personal one-on-one thing because I'd rather not say I'm a diastate because I don't need to be sued again. And I will say that I'm, with Mr. Rocco and Mrs. Rocco and this veterans thing, because there are a lot of issues that we don't know about. You see every day in the paper, Kent LeShun, firefighting problem, which is what I was with military. I'm not sick now, but who knows, right? And as far as claims go back, that would probably be the strongest reason to reconsider the ordinance, only because there are, there's only, I believe, a dozen or some people in this town that have, are ready to tax-free ordinance. So I know there's two or three that are 100% already as well. Now, in fairness to the council, I would say that, well, you know, I don't like to say that word. You don't really get the information you need right away. Okay, so the object is, you were talking before about you don't have control over certain monies, you actually do. You don't have control over who they hire, or say, as we've found out many times over already, but you do have the okay to say, this has looked too much, much, we're not gonna pay you. And I realize that everything you do, it's hard to undo, especially when it comes to personnel. It can lead to a lot of headaches. Stuck job. I don't, I'm guessing we don't need police coverage because they're not here. But I just asked you to reconsider that in your vote tonight, you know, give that little thought, that's a tough fight to end. As you remember, one time I was mayor, when we went to the EMS thing, I'm sure Doug remembers this, you couldn't get in this building. You go after veterans, my God, they'll be coming down the walls. Okay, so you're not going after them, but unfortunately, this kind of does look like you're trying to set a precedent that shouldn't be.
Good question, Mr. Rocco. The ordinance for the veterans, just take out one and three, let them share. Leave it on number two. Go back to the day of your disability insurance from the beginning. Problem solved.
We can edit it by voice right now, panel.
We can edit, edit it by voice right now, panel.
Why? Why can't you get any of them now?
Attorney's on here.
Can I, she's.
Yeah.
Colin Rockwell, Lieutenant Allen. Why isn't the attorney at the VA here?
She, uh, the attorney is, is she on, online? So Vicky is online. Uh, she cannot get, uh, here in time. Um, there was another function going on today. Uh, the business administrator may could not be here based on the date that we set.
So if the attorney's online, why can't you guys cross that out?
I stay as.
And she's online, so she's here. It's not like there's no attorney online.
She's online.
Okay. Vicky, are you?
Able to unmute.
Yeah, hi, Council President, I just typed it. I just sent you a message. If you want to change the ordinance, I just wouldn't introduce it tonight. I would bring it back, talk to the tax collector and then, and then reintroduce it. If that's what you're.
So do we, so do we table it or vote no?
You could table it or vote no, either way, but I would suggest you just table it, talk to the tax collector and then we could reintroduce it. I just wouldn't, I just want. You could change an ordinance if you would like to today. We could make a motion to change it and second it and all in favor and then reintroduce it that way. My only suggestion is that you want to maybe just run that by the tax collector first.
Okay.
We can make a motion to do that now or in the second meeting, right? Right?
Thank you. Hey, make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
All in favor?
Uh, make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. This meeting was called for Thursday, June sixth, twenty twenty-four at seven thirty P M at Borough Hall located at seventy-seven Summit Hill Road, Spotswood, New Jersey pursuant to the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. N J S A ten four dash eight B. The public may choose to attend this meeting electronically via Google Meet. This meeting won't advertise a sponsored website and the home is reviewed.
Councilman Kramer.
Here.
Councilman Letzko.
Here.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Here.
Councilman Zaborni.
Here.
And Council President Legakis.
Here.
I ask everybody to please rise and salute the flag. We will also have a moment of silence in memory of D-Day. Okay, we have two ordinances on the first reading. Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six and ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven.
I'll take a motion to accept. And introduce ordinance twenty twenty-four dash six on the first reading, public hearing set for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion to. No. Oh.
It was silent ordinance.
Oh, the silent ordinance. Yeah.
That's the silent ordinance.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to table twenty twenty-four dash six.
I'll second it.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Letzko.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Be honest with you, I want to vote no on it. This is. I, I understand, but.
No, I know, but I know, but.
I completely understand.
Yeah.
I completely understand.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes.
Okay, I'll take a motion to accept ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven on first reading, public hearing set for June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four.
Table, get rid of it. I don't, it should be. I don't think it should be tabled. I think it should be. Should go and it should be rewritten, right? Great. Make a motion to kill it. And I'll shoot it.
Second.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Letzko.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes.
Uh, next, Council President and Council members, I'll take a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen, resolution appointing DeShawn T. Kemp as our chief financial officer.
Shouldn't we have voted? No, because it'd be voting no on first reading. We were responding in the affirmative to kill it. Does it make, does a no place matter on that? You know what I'm saying? Vicky, did you hear what I said?
Yes, and I think a motion to table is fine. I would, it's not a motion to kill. There's no motion to kill. Motion to introduce it, second it, and then all vote no. Or you make a motion to table, second it, and then execute the ability. You could reintroduce something at the next meeting.
So make, so. Open a backup. Make a motion to open a backup and vote on ordinance twenty-four dash seven.
Second.
I vote no.
We have to. No, we don't. Yes.
Make, make a motion to vote on ordinance twenty-four dash seven.
Okay, Councilman Kramer.
No. Oh, we gotta open it? Okay, yeah.
Councilman Letzko.
Wait.
We're opening to open discussion.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes to opening it to vote on it.
Council President Legakis.
Wait, what?
Opening it back up so we can.
Yes, so opening.
So now, now I'll make a motion to, uh, prove it on first reading instead of public hearing for June seventeenth.
Okay. Second. Second. Councilman Kramer. Councilman Letzko.
No.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
No.
Councilman Zaborni.
No.
And Council President Legakis. Okay.
Same gist.
Now I will take a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one, uh, resolution appointing DeShawn T. Kemp as our chief financial officer.
I will make a motion to accept resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighty-one.
Second.
Councilman Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Letzko.
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilman Zaborni.
Yes.
And Council President Legakis.
Yes. Hey. At this time, uh, make a motion to open the public if anybody has any questions.
No. Is there a second?
I do just want to say.
Is there?
Problem? Um. I mentioned this in the winter. No, no, you're sorry. I mentioned this in the winter and, uh, it's here already, paper shredder. Ice floe Junaid on Saturday from nine A M. Yeah. That's all I wanted to say. Because I'll be there. Anyone else?
Yes, please. I just want to say the Memorial Day parade was phenomenal and between the raindrops at the end and everything in the day, really the planning and all the participants and it was just great energy in our town. It was great to have that energy back in our town and will continue forth moving and, uh, thank you for involving me. Um, D-Day, remember it's day. Thank you for all those who have served and continue to serve and sacrifice for our country. Uh, deeply appreciate it and, uh, much loved to all. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will just echo also, thank you and everybody else that was involved. Uh, Doug, everybody, you know, that took part in, in making the parade, uh, possibility. Um, our police officers, firefighters, thank you, everybody. Um, EMS, thank you, everybody for, uh, involved, being involved and, and involving us and, and. Um, we, we beat the rain just by a hair, so. Um, thank you.
So I apologize to the end of the line. The beginning of the line made out a little better.
The end of the line was mostly vehicles, so.
So, and the kids, I don't know where the kids, how far back were the kids? Oh, they were back. They were wet. They were wet. Yeah, they were wet. I called out his children, but yes. Yeah, they were wet.
Uh, make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I want to thank you all for attending more of the parade and services, which are the more important part of the parade. We all know we would not be enjoying any of the freedom we did if something hadn't given their lives. There's an awful lot on that. Probably more in the future the way we're headed, but. We only hope for the best. Uh, thank you all for attending. I thank for your help. I thank the police department, EMS, fire, O E M, everybody that showed up and gave us the handout thing. Especially the Council President who jumped in with Larry and cooked the breakfast. That was a great deal. Your mom was there and I appreciate it.
Yes.
Definitely. What do I do?
Well, now the whole process to do everything is a lot longer. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You tried.
Take a motion to close the vote.
So I still haven't received my email logs that I've asked for numerous times. Um, I'd like to know if the council has reinstated the, uh, suspended police officers. Share an emergency meeting for that. Are you guys intending to do that?
We cannot, we cannot comment on any of that at this meeting. This is a special meeting just for the items that are on the agenda.
Well, now it's public comment. I can speak back. Just asking. Regards to this. No, that was the other part. The agenda now is probably portion. So, or we, we stayed suspended.
Cannot comment on it.
Uh, and again, um. Colleen brought this up where she came in the building and immediately Brandon came running out. We paying him to watch the cameras and then stalk people that come in the building?
Yes.
I do not know what the business administrator does during the day.
Who's in charge of business administration? The, the administration? Jackie? She's got all her bulldogs running around. So it's going to cause more lawsuits to the town. Super. Uh, and again, you know, reiterate for the third time, mayor doesn't live in town. How's she matter?
I, I have no information on that.
We need to investigate it. She can't be mayor. She doesn't live in town.
As you were aware, we tried to hire an attorney and we were not able to. So.
So we just.
I don't know what else I can tell you.
And screws the shit out of the, the, the place and shows you live here and she can't be mayor, unless she's going to still be mayor because we don't have balls.
Thank you.
A real employee or a virtual employee that you pass yet?
He, he, he will be here, yes. Yeah, he'll be, he'll, he'll be ball.
Colin Rockwell, Lieutenant Allen. Um, just what Steve said, I wasn't gonna. I came into the building the other day to pick up stuff at a balcony. Every time I come into this building, every time. Brandon comes running out of his office and goes down to Jenny's office. Every time. This time I called the balance bullshit though. This time I called him right out in hallway because I'm tired of coming into the building and being stalked. By him. And that's what it is. It's stalking. Because there's no reason. I have no contact with him. The only person I ever have contact in this building with is with Jenny. Whether it's over an Oprah bust, the polling situations, that's it. Every time. He sees me downstairs and I'm not the only, I'm not the, the only individual, the only resident that's come up and said this. I mean, there's multiple employees that have said this. There are multiple residents that have said this. The cameras need to be taken out of their offices. Why do we have individuals that are watching cameras twenty-four seven? Why are we paying John Skatonic eighty thousand dollars a year to watch cameras? Why are we paying Brandon money to take information home to watch the cameras? We know he's watched them based on the portability that I read at the last meeting. How the hell did he know I was in the building that day? The only way he could have known is if he was watching the cameras because you can't see anything out of the mayor's office because you just got paper on top of the windows. So I'm going to tell you what's going to happen because I'm done. I'm done. I'm tired of being stalked. The next time he comes out of his office, I'm coming down here. I'm filing a complaint with the police department. I'm going to file a stalking charge against you. Because I'm tired of being stalked every time I come into this building. I come into the building, I do what I have to do and I leave. I say nothing to anybody. There's no reason for him to be standing over me to hear what I have to say. You need to get rid of him. Pay his salary off and get rid of his ass. Get rid of him. He's more of a problem than he is anything else. He's a nuisance. He's a problem. And right behind him, you should get rid of the attorney. I understand you guys have legal issues, but you know what? You can't be in any more of a situation than you are in now.
Diane Charles from the twenty-nine old stage room. Colin's not the only one. Um, they have this to me as well and, and it was me and it's, it's both of them, Skatonic and, um, Brandon. And again, I'm only coming to see Jenny. Why do we have to be monitored? You know? We're all grown-up kids. Well, some of us are a little more grown up than others, but, um, it, it's ridiculous. We're not causing any problems. We're not keeping them from doing their jobs. It's ridiculous. He's a frustrated cop, maybe. I don't know.
I can't. Correction, I do not make seventy-five thousand dollars.
I'm sorry.
I meant, Bill says seventy-five on the thing.
Yeah, so. Just correction. Thank you very much. Make a motion to close the public portion. All in favor?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, everyone.